Folks, you're back. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jonas with Veterans and Politics, our third show today. And we have Daniel Ford. She is the current Clark County School Board trustee representing District F. But before we get to Ms. Ford, Jim, do you have any rants?
No, actually, I'm just really looking forward to this interview because as unfortunate as COVID was, I really, I always try to make a positive out of a negative, right? So we've been talking about the importance of the school board for a number of years and how no one ever attends those meetings. Well, now, a lot of people were attending them because of the satellite learning and the Zoom learning that went on. I think it exposed parents to more of what type of education their kids were getting. And so a lot more parents have been involved in attending the school board meetings, so.
And, and I just wanted to say that Veterans and Politics was tasked to go into more in-depth with the school board, trying to find out if there's any corruption, all that, but Family Court just kept me there. So I couldn't leave Family Court and they kept suing me, so I had to stay. So I guess the Clark County School District needs to thank you stupid attorneys out there that decided to sue me to keep me in Family Court. So I didn't mess with the Clark County School Board as much as I wanted to.
Right.
I mean, we did talk about the Pendleton bike, but we could talk to Ms. Ford about that as well and all the other good stuff. But Ms. Ford, hi.
Hello.
Thank you for coming on.
Thank you for having me.
Could you give us a bio? Tell us about yourself.
Um, I should have like an elevator pitch. I don't. I am going into my, in my fourth year as a trustee of CCSD. I never had political ambitions. I never wanted to run for office, but as a mom of two kids who are both now almost graduated from CCSD and as a previous CCSD student myself, it was hard to ignore when I was volunteering for my kids, PTO and Cub Scouts and volunteering in the classroom and seeing the experience of our educators even years and years ago. I just felt like I had more questions than answers. And I thought, you know, let me just give a shot at this. I do marketing. I think I could win an election. I don't know anything about education. I don't know anything about politics. I feel like I can learn all of that really quickly. Let me just go in here and figure out what's going on. So that's what I've been doing. I do feel like I learned things really quickly. I, my first six months on the board, I was, you know, I had big ideas and listening to constituents and trying to, you know, get some logical answers. And I was very frustrated going like, hey, guys, here's a, you know, good solution. How come we're not doing it? And then I started kind of connecting some dots and unfortunately do feel like there's a lot of corruption. There's a lot of political games.
Corruption where?
Um, it's education in general nationally.
And could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's so many aspects of it, honestly. So from, from, you know, political groups that have not, you know, they're outsiders that are from different states, funding candidates in local school board elections, especially school boards of large urban districts, to be able to get a majority vote, to be able to get them to influence who the superintendent is, to be able to get that person to bring in large contracts that are called like co-ops or joiners of curriculum and testing companies and difference. It's all the things that we could be using our community and our local businesses to help us provide and probably saving money. And it's, it's a whole thing. But, um, you know, I just, I'm, right now I'm really defeated or feel really defeated because it's almost like they're winning and they're winning.
The corruption is winning.
Those who benefit from all kids being standard issue and going through the same things and checking the boxes and being on the computers and paying attention and who have contracts that need to be fulfilled and who can license their curriculum and programs and software to us for millions and millions and millions of dollars a year, who can have guaranteed access to that multi-billion dollar well of funds that only seven people oversee. So, and then, you know.
Who are the seven people?
The trustees.
Okay.
We're supposed to, but if you can get at least four trustees to be, to give power to the superintendent, then the only person you have to influence is the superintendent. So I'm running for reelection, even though people are like, why? And I'm like, I don't know. But because I can't just leave.
Even I don't know.
I don't know. I have no idea. Um, I would not feel okay with just like being like, this is too, too much, too stressful, too disheartening to just walk away. I'm hoping that, you know, elections go a certain way in the future or certain trustees get on board and, you know, lady up and take control back of the board.
You got a lot of catchphrases. I really, really do like.
I don't think I've ever said that before in my life. So I guess I'll give it again.
I got one of your catchphrases. I think Jim is gonna bring up that. I really like the best.
Which catch? There's so many.
Oh, no, it was just, I don't think I should actually say.
Of course you can say it. This is that type of program.
Okay, yeah. Um, how do I put it? Um, I do appreciate the fact that you are very blunt and I say blunt things all the time, but I forget the other trustee you were talking to, but I believe it was Dr. Linda Young at a school board meeting when you said this is not a dick measuring contest?
Oh, no, I was talking in general to the board.
Right.
I wasn't, yeah, because Linda Young had said that an initiative that President Lola Brooks was brought on against Linda Young was racist. And I said, I don't think it's racist. I just think it's a dick measuring contest.
Okay.
But in my defense, it was a dick measuring contest.
You know, it's interesting you, it's interesting you say that because when we were at.
I'd like to know what she meant by that. What did you mean by that?
Yeah.
So President Brooks at this time, um, Lindy, she didn't like Linda Young because the first, I didn't know this at the time, but the first meeting where Lola was elected, I guess Linda Young said on the record Lola shouldn't be on the board to exit a charter school. It's a conflict of interest. So from there on, like Lola did not like Dr. Young.
That's true though.
It is true. So whatever. Okay. So like her, don't like her. So then Dr. Young really, really passionately wanted to be on the NIAA committee.
Which is?
Athletics.
Okay.
Um, she, she knows there's a lot of like disproportionality. There's a lot of like things that, uh, she said that CCSD has never had a black representative in like 30 years or something. And that's all of Nevada. And so there have been, I think the president was black at that time, but he was from a rural district. And so she's going like, there's things about CCSD that you need to know. For instance, when a student transfers schools, maybe they are like economically disadvantaged, maybe something happened, domestic violence. That student who might be on track for a scholarship or whatnot can't play sports for another year. And so she had witnessed a lot of students, especially in her community, who had dropped out of school, gotten, you know, upset they couldn't play, got in trouble, went to prison. So she was really passionate about wanting on that board, right? While Lola was doing everything to keep her off of it. And then when Dr. Young went on her annual vacation, the same time that she always is, Lola decided last minute to try to push the board to adopt a policy that says if any trustee is terming out or, or might not win their election, in the amount of time, in the amount of time before they would finish their term on a committee, that the president can't appoint them to a committee. So she, so at this time, Dr. Young had like 23 months left or something.
She was blackballing her basically.
Yes. And she was doing it when she wasn't there. And Dr. Young called in on the phone unexpectedly and was like, I can't believe you're doing this. Do not approve this. That's racist. And that's when I was like, I don't think it's racist. I just think it's a dick measuring contest.
Right.
You know, so.
I just got a lot of publicity and I was like, okay.
Whatever. That's.
Yeah. Well, no, hey, sometimes, sometimes things have to be said.
So I want to switch gears to the superintendent.
Yeah.
I want to know who wrote his contract because whoever wrote his contract, I want them to write all my contracts. Because I don't see how somebody could get termed or fired or removed and still get paid until the end of their contract, whether it's two years out, three years out or four years out. Who did that? And whoever hired that person, in my opinion, to write that type of contract and whoever approved it, I have few words to say to them. So could you elaborate?
I had that same question around the time that we were discussing possibly extending his contract. And the way the law is, is that everything regarding, like, we can't approve any contracts or any change in pay unless it's like at a publicly noticed meeting. But then there's times where we would talk about his employment or any superintendent's employment or what are, you know, those details that are employee personnel that wouldn't be public. It would happen in a closed session. So as a trustee, I can go back and I can request previous closed sessions of the board and the attorneys. So I spent a good weeks, weeks trying to find that answer and called other trustees that were on the board at that time and asked like, when did you guys sit down and decide, how much do we want to pay him? How, what are the ways to which we might be able to terminate? And what would those stipulations look like? Like where is that conversation?
And to add, he makes more than the governor.
He does. Much more.
Much more than the governor. How does that even happen?
I had.
And to add to the fact, he's not vested in, in the state of Nevada because his wife and kids still live in Florida.
Wow.
Unless they move recently.
Well, I don't want to get into the personal details of his life because that's irrelevant, but, um, fact of the matter is that the answer to your question is that he was hired, like, let's hire him. And after he was hired, he brought his contract. And several trustees were just like, okay, that's it. And then there was no negotiating and there was like, that's what he comes with. And so that's another example of what's happening nationally. In fact, there are big groups that train, that recruit and train principals and take them up this leadership pipeline and, you know, teach them how to be a good superintendent or whatever, teach them what contracts to bring in, teach them whatever, give them all the tools, cookie cutter stuff. And then they fund superintendent search firms after they've already funded the board, you know, elected several members. And then they get a trustee to bring in that search firm, which Carolyn Edwards did last time. She said, I want this search firm. And then that search firm only brings a handful of candidates that are all from the same group. And so it's like the illusion of choice. And then when they're hired and given this narrative around like, we want the best. It has to be national. He'd never been a superintendent anywhere.
Yeah, it's kind of like non-negotiated contracts in the military.
So who, who wrote that contract?
Um, somebody who, who, I don't know, tells the superintendent what to do and is like, they probably write a lot of our contracts.
Does a trustee approve that contract?
They, the board, the previous board did approve it publicly at a meeting, but it was, there was no discussion. It was just like, okay, now we're gonna, we already hired, we chose Superintendent Jara. Now this item is his contract, you know, yes or no, whatever. And it was like really quick. So they did approve it. That was, your buddy Kevin, ask him. He approved it.
She says my buddy Kevin.
I'm cool with Kevin. I'm just saying, like, I asked him the same thing.
You're talking about the former school board trustee Kevin Child.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, but who would approve a contract that's, that doesn't leave any room to terminate a, a, a contract without continually paying for the person as if they were still working?
His contract does. There's three ways in which he could, four ways in which he would not be superintendent. One, his contract would expire, which now currently expires January of 2023.
Yeah, but I, but if I was to terminate him like how they were trying to do, they would still have to pay him.
Or we could terminate for convenience, which means that we could all have our own personal reasons for wanting to terminate him. And we don't have to come together as a group of the majority to determine this is why we're doing it. Oh, you did something bad. If we're just like, hey, we gotta go in a different direction. Hey, the state lost trust. We want to terminate. That's for convenience. It came in, in his contract that he would then get paid out his salary to the end of the year. I didn't do that. We can terminate for cause. Let's say that he did something illegal, illegal. Let's say that he, you know, whatever. Even if we did that, that would be the only way that, um, I think he would still have like some time before he wasn't superintendent and it would, we'd have to prove it. So it would actually probably be past the term of his contract expiring by the time that we proved that thing was, you know, bad or whatever. And so it's the amount that we'd spend on legal fees and whatnot to even try to terminate for cause is worth it just to like pay out if we wanted to terminate the superintendent.
So moving forward, are you guys gonna approve a contract that says that if you're terminated, you don't get paid? Your contract ends, you don't get paid anymore, you're done?
Even if I knew what we were gonna do, which I don't, I couldn't share that information because we would be discussing that in closed sessions. Where right now, he has a contract that got extended until January. And if nothing happens before then, it'll be January like 5th or 10th or something. It'll be like, we don't have a superintendent. So between now and then.
Do you have assistant superintendent that could fill in?
We could. We have a lot of other people that could. I mean, there's a plethora of people. We, we could find someone to hold the fort down, you know? So if I had to guess, I would say in between now and January, something will come up where someone will try to make a move or something with that, but I don't know what that might be.
So I made a comment earlier and based on the sources that I have saying that the current superintendent, Jesus Jara, family, wife and kids live in Florida, but yet he's the superintendent of the Clark County School District. Do you think somebody is well vested in, 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 in Clark County if he, he or she doesn't move their family here? And family lives in another state, especially if family lives in a different time zone, which is three hours difference? Do you think somebody like that is well vested?
I think there, he could be, there could be. Um, I think that's not my place to, you know, ponder at his intentions or if he is whatever, that really is irrelevant. I guess there's a reason to think that that does create that appearance. Um, so even the appearance, sometimes, you know, that's important to how things look to the public. That's just really, I, I do think that there's cases where somebody could be living here and still not being vested in the community, like, you know, and not have great intentions either. So I just think it's irrelevant. Um, but yeah.
Okay. Uh, they couldn't find somebody to fill the superintendent's position that's within Clark County. They have to get somebody elsewhere. There's nobody here.
I wasn't on the board when that happened. So we, there were.
How would you do it if you were, if you were on the board? Would you look for somebody here or would you look for somebody that's not here?
I'm open to, I don't have any like stipulations. I would want to, I want, I would want the board to be like, don't consider people individually yet that we all know. Don't consider what is being told, you know, that the best superintendent is this and that. Let's look at the district and let's look at what we've had, what we've done, what the district needs right now. And it's possible that the type of leadership we need right now is not what's best in like these articles, you know, or it's possible that we do need somebody really, you know, good and worth like searching for and they should, I don't know. We'd have to have that conversation and be, my, my personal opinion is that we need right now in the crisis we're in, coming out of COVID and needing to bring teachers back, needing to make amends with the different municipalities and, you know, electeds. We need somebody who really knows the community, who cares about the community, who may or may not have a lot of superintendent experience, but deeply understands education and deeply understands children and people. So to me, and who's heart centered and who's willing to be like, we gotta lead with love. We gotta, you know, attract people who are really gonna care and not just people that are rigorous, you know, instructionally or whatever. So that's my opinion.
So let me ask you this, based on something you just said earlier, um, do you even really have much of a choice? Cause you were saying how they got these superintendent recruiting firms. Because years ago, and I forget his name, his name escapes me now, but there was a superintendent that we recruited out of Colorado. Then he became our superintendent. And then after he stopped being our superintendent, he went to San Francisco and his publishing company that hired him.
Carlos Garcia. But he, he was here in 2000 and then he left here to be VP of McGraw-Hill.
Yep.
And then he became superintendent in San Francisco. Then he recruited, um, what's his face, Richard Carranza, who was here. He was El Dorado principal to become his deputy superintendent. Then Carranza went to Houston and then Carranza went to New York and Carlos Garcia retired. But yes, he has that now retirement pension for McGraw-Hill. McGraw-Hill is one of the top three biggest publishing companies alongside with Pearson and some others. And so, yeah. And by the way, Carlos Garcia is in the same exact superintendent training recruiting program as Superintendent Jara and many other superintendents that we've had. We really have not had a fair chance in over 20 years at having a, a really good superintendent that we actually found doing, like the board doing it. Yeah.
So let me ask you this, and this is actually from my information. I wish I would have looked this up earlier. Is there anything that the school board itself can do or would that have to be a legislative issue to, uh, to, uh, stop that from, stop that from occurring? So who picks this trustee recruiting firm? Is it the board? Is it whoever's like Carolyn Edwards, like you were saying earlier, did?
It's all politics. I think at that point Carolyn Edwards had the trust of the majority of the board.
Yeah, I, I know Carolyn. She's been around for a long time now.
And I don't dislike Carolyn.
Yeah, no, I'm not blaming her. I'm just saying in particular, just as you build up enough seniority, you have, you tend to have more say in organization.
So one thing I try to remember is that despite me not liking it being done like that, there are probably people who believe that's the way to do things.
Right.
Like, we're gonna be, do better if we're doing the same things as all these other large districts. Oh, if we can just all use the same instruct, you know, curriculum. So perceptions of reality or whatever. My perception is that that's not the way we should be doing things, especially with kids. You know, they're not one size fits all. They're not standard. We shouldn't be standardizing everything. But there is, if that's what the board wants, if that's what the board believes, then all you can do is elect better people. But it's unfair when you have these, say, all these people who are, you know, in the same groups and making money, you know, all their hands are on the pot, when they're funding candidates to the potential of like 10 times the amount of your regular person who wants to run.
Right.
So, I mean, they're usually outspent by like, I don't know, like probably 10 times.
I wanna, I wanna get back to salary and perks. How much does a superintendent make for Clark County School District?
His salary is like 320. Then he also has, um, $750 a month in like car and he has health benefits and he gets the expense for wellness benefits to 5,000 a year. And then he gets a cell phone and a computer and like all these things and the reimbursement for travel. And, and the board doesn't see that, at least I don't, I think maybe the president does. So I don't know, maybe he's like being really fiscally responsible or maybe he's like ordering lobster. Like I have no idea. So.
How much does the governor make?
I don't know.
About 165 or around?
Yeah, it's like half or something.
Half of it? So the school board, a Clark County School Board superintendent makes double of what the Nevada governor makes?
Yes. And he's never been a superintendent before.
And he's never been a superintendent before. Kind of, kind of, um, Joe Biden's kid with the, um, the electric deal in that other country.
I don't, I don't know how that's relevant, but he's never been a superintendent before.
I was just comparing it because he's never done that before and the superintendent never been a superintendent before. It's basically what I was trying to make the analogy to. But, um, let's talk about the Pendleton bike.
Peloton?
Peloton. That's the one. How did he even, the Peloton bike is what? How much, how much one of those things cost?
I don't know.
About $2,100?
It's a couple thousand. Um, I didn't know that even happened until like got out or whatever. That's something, another example of the expenses that only the president sees and signs off on. And only when like you really want to look deeply, could you maybe come across it? But there's so many things that we have to pay attention to and follow in crises that some of these things just like, you know, get pushed under the rug or whatever.
So he, he's got this Peloton bike that the board approved. That was before you, you came on, correct?
Um, I, no, I was on the board, but I was really early on. It was when Lola Brooks became president. And that was when I was on the board. So a couple of months in.
When we exposed that, he, he made a statement that he needed a stress, but doesn't everybody? Like the teachers?
It's in his contract. I mean, it's, it's in his contract. So I can't like argue it. There's again, like the optics of, at a time, it was literally at the same time when teachers were striking. And we're like, I mean, we were, that we had, we're at $17 million deficit. Teachers are striking, like, I don't know that it was a great decision, you know, at that moment, but, um, he has a right to. It's in his contract.
So it's kind of one of those things where you guys had bigger fish to fry at the time.
And it's, we, that's fine. He, he was in his contract. If we wanted to change his contract, if somebody had maybe given a public comment and said, teacher, this and that, why don't you change the $5,000 wellness benefit in the superintendent's contract? And then the four trustees wanted to agendize it and do that, we could have. But no one did. It's, you know, it just happened afterwards and I'm, I don't even know what he's spending his wellness benefit on every year since then. And like, I actually don't really care because it's in his contract. He has a right to. I don't know that I would have agreed to that if I was on the board, but it is what it is.
In the, in several legislations ago, and this has nothing to do, but I'm, I'm gonna get to, do it you, but I'm gonna get to why it's relevant. They, they passed a recreational marijuana bill and it was argued that those dollars were, was to use for education and, and increase teachers' salaries. Have you, as a school board trustee, have you seen any of those dollars for, for teachers' salary wage increases or, or, or education for that matter?
No, that, that's the question that people ask the most and I think it's valid. I think that it was communicated so much, was pushed so much, you know, to everybody, you know, to vote for this so that we would help education. So they communicated this and then it was actually wrongly communicated as to what it was gonna be. And then there was no communication out afterwards as to like how it's working now, that everyone's mad about it, asking about it. There's still no communication. So it's like, you can't really get mad at people for being upset when they voted in a way and did something to try to help.
Or manipulated.
Yeah, or it was just like not explained thoroughly that we were at that time under the same funding formula that we've been under for 30 years. And so the way I explain it to parents or anyone is that, um, it used to be supplanting. And so now we're in the middle of changing the funding formula to supplement instead, but basically it would be like this. It would be like, the state has said that they are going to make sure that we have enough money to pay our bills every month. Okay. So that would be like, let's say, I tell you, I'm gonna make sure you have enough to pay your cable bill. It's a hundred dollars. Like, I got you. You're gonna pay your cable bill.
I'm gonna hold you to it.
Okay. So then I give you like a hundred dollar bill, right? Every month. And then a couple of months later, it's your birthday and someone gives you $20 for your birthday. And then I'm like, oh, you got $20. Oh, right. Here is $80. Now you can pay your cable bill. Cause that's what I told you that we would do and make sure that you can pay your cable bill. Um, it was, I never said I'm giving you $100 a month, right? So now when you have these new taxes coming in, marijuana money, the state gives less to equal out that amount because they're supplanting instead of supplementing. Not okay, but it was, so that money is going to education. It's just now we're getting less money. So it's the same amount. It doesn't add to it. And, you know, honestly, it's a drop in the bucket. What we should be looking at is the room tax money that went, that the casinos actually raised the, uh, from 11% to 14% to help education. I think in 2012 or so. And the first year was a couple million dollars that was supposed to be, but the funding formula is ancient and what they did, so there's the general fund, right? And then there's all these other funds. One of them is education. So that money goes into the general fund. And then technically it's in the education fund, but it's never making its way down to education. And since then, it has been spent and used. And now that 3% goes to, I don't know what, roads or something. And it's almost like not talked about. It's like something like we don't bring up. But we were, I mean, if we were to get that money back that was supposed to go to education in the same way that the marijuana tax was, we'd be looking at like a couple billion dollars. So same thing happened, but the one to be mad at is the room tax.
So I want you to know that, that you already confirmed to come on the endorsement interview. So you're gonna be here. I won't, I have nothing to do with endorsements or, or the panel. So I won't, I won't even be able to ask you any more questions. So this is my only opportunity on camera to actually ask you questions. And with saying that, Ms. Ford, now, now that, now, now we talked about the marijuana money for education, okay? So as a member of the school board, would. So as a member of the school board, would you open up an investigation or inquire, inquire about an investigation as to find out where those dollars are? That, that's supposed to be for education that, that, that you don't see?
I've literally asked that. I've said we need a forensic audit. I actually don't think we need a forensic audit. But people want a forensic audit, so we at least need to do something or explain why we don't need a forensic audit, but we need a better audit than we have right now. Um, I've said on the record, are we spending $500 on a hammer? Like, if, if, if that's the cost of hammers and we are spending that much money, that's not fraud. If our audit firm looks at it and knows that that is the price that a company sells hammers for and we're just buying hammers, it's not fraud. So that's, that's what an audit does. Um, and our audit firm, by the way, does our bookkeeping and our auditing. I've asked about that many times. Okay, um, so I don't.
How could you push the issue though?
We need four trustees to be like, hey, I don't think we're committing fraud. I don't think that we need a forensic audit to catch anybody.
Are you putting it on the agenda?
We need to be better fiscally responsible and let's talk about our vision and our goals and how much money we wanna save. And is there ways to be able to find another company that sells it for less, you know? So I can't do anything as it is right now, honestly.
Put it on the agenda and put it up.
If I had four trustees who would support anything I do. Right now there are four trustees on that board who will fight anything I do just because they don't like me.
But you can still put it on the.
I cannot. The president and the superintendent put agenda items on.
How did the superintendent have any power over the trustees?
I've asked that question.
Shouldn't it be the trustees that's able? Because you're the ones that fire and hire.
You're absolutely right. The trustees have decided to give the power to the superintendent.
No wonder the, the superintendent behaves the way he does.
Then all, then all these people that like are connected come in and give us this tr- trainings and they're like, here's how you be a good trustee. Stay out of the superintendent's way. Let me give you case studies from other districts. In this district, trustees were trying to ask, um, I want stairs built in this school. And then they got in trouble and they got sued. So be careful and make sure you do what the superintendent says. And then they're like, oh, okay. And I'm like, show me the case study. Also, that's anecdotal. Also, that's not, no one's asking about stairs. We're asking about important stuff. So it's nonsense. Nobody's critically thinking. We don't have any like training in like actual problem solving. It's just, here's the rules. Be a good girl, follow, check the boxes. If you do it, we'll um, invite you to stuff. And you'll get people to clap for you and we'll give you a gold star by your name.
Okay, you guys got a huge teacher shortage, right?
Yes.
I have teachers emailing me and calling me saying, hey, I have credentials. I go and they turn me down. So if you guys have a teacher shortage and here you have Nevadans that are coming, stepping up to the plate that have teachers' credentials. And yet you guys are telling them no. So either you have a teacher shortage or you don't have a teacher shortage because I'm confused. Do you have a teacher shortage? And if you do, why are you turning away qualified people that could fill those positions?
Well, you're asking the wrong question. We have a teacher shortage. No one's denying that. The real question is, who do we want to fill that shortage with? And is it qualified, experienced educators who cost more money? And who also would stand up to admin and superintendents and speak at the board?
Basically is what.
It would appear so, but I'm not gonna, you know, that's it's, it's proved to me that that's not what's happening, you know? Some, okay, I will say that some of it is out of our hands at the state level, especially around like fingerprint. Like sometimes we, background checks, checks won't come through. Sometimes people just got, you know, approved for a background check because they're police or something. And then they have to get another one. So there is some stuff that's like stuck at the state level that we could be like help lobbying or something, but that's not all of it. And then as a trustee, I'll hear that same thing. And then if I try to inquire, I'm told that it's like employee, employee labor stuff and don't meddle in collective bargaining, whatnot. And then we're supposed to, you know, point them to the direction of the union. But then I hear that they're not doing anything either. And so that's kind of where I am with it.
Does the union run the school board?
No, the union, I mean, there's, we work with several different unions. I would say that I haven't been super impressed by the executive director of the teachers' unions choices and the way that he acts and treats the board and the public and teachers. Um, the union, the union is, it's not a person. It's a group of people. It could be good, bad, you know what I mean? Um, people in the union I think are great. Um, but from what I've experienced in just my three years, I don't think that any decisions are coming through that union that are not exactly coming from John Villardita, the executive director.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about the open meeting law. What I've been told, that uh, that the school board made, the school board trustees made a lot of agreements and vote on a lot of issues that, that's supposed to be in the open meeting law and they do it privately. Is that a true statement or no?
Um, there has not been a single thing that has been proven um, that the, that the trustees did wrong in regards to the open meeting law. It has been said and certain trustees, Irene Cepeda, gave the open, an, an open meeting law violation that she knew of as her reason for changing her vote about the superintendent.
And why, why was that?
And then was never able, never filed a complaint, never did anything. I've asked, was there any open meeting law violation? No. And now there's no way to like, make anyone answer for anything, you know, like it's crazy.
How could you put your vote in to, to get rid of somebody and then, and then reneg it in the knock, in the next?
I don't think it's allowed, but our attorney at the time, we have a new attorney now, um, our attorney at the time allowed it. And I don't think that was the right call.
And, and then another thing dealing with the open meeting law, I had a lot of parents and teachers say that they're, they're, they're not given their time to speak before the trustee. That you guys mute their mic, cut them off, kick them out, arrest them.
Um, I think that for the most part, we've done just fine with public comment. Uh, it, it has gotten crazy at times, to the point where if you're not at the meeting, you don't see the context around it and how how bad it is, but it's, we try. I mean, I've never been the one to like be in charge of the meeting. Um, I keep on getting voted out of being president. I keep on losing like a three, four votes. So maybe one day. Yeah, like I, everyone has two minutes. It's, it's our policies.
You don't cut everybody off and say, okay, we're done. We're not, we're not taking anymore.
We cannot do that. Will not happen. Any person who wants to speak can speak. We even allot for time at the end of the meeting. Even if somebody shows up running in the door a minute before we end and they're like, I wanna speak, we're gonna let them speak. But what we do is we cut off, um, and we, we actually do not have to let people speak at the beginning of the meeting at all. That's a choice. We, because it's like they take forever, you know? So we do say 20 minutes at the beginning for public comment. Sometimes we can extend it to 30 minutes, but then we cut it off at that point. Till the end of the meeting. Sometimes people think that we cut their time off or we don't let them speak. Sometimes people are saying things that you can't say. There's only, so we do have a right to say, if, if you're disrupting the meeting, you can't be here. It's in the, the law, you know? Um, if you're cussing, if you are threatening anybody, not, you know, whatever. And I think that the board is actually really lenient with that. And I actually believe unless it's something that's crazy, like people have a right to just go be mean to you. Like in public, you know, like I don't like it, but they're right. Um, so I think that we're actually more lenient than other, I mean, the city council wouldn't stand for that. The commissioners would not. So then it's, I guess, uh, maybe because we are so lenient, you know, then they compare like, oh, well you let that person do it and not this person. So um, I would never support like trying to like tighten it up. I would support trying to communicate with people better and helping them to have a productive public comment and maybe offering some coaching or even some like Mad Lib style cards that they can like share their grievance and a solution, but um, I would say that we have not done anything wrong. It was tough with COVID. First of all, actually the one thing we did do wrong was Lola Brooks when she was president. When we went to virtual, she just decided no public comment. And me and Linda Kavasas were like, you can't do that. And she's like, yes, I can. And then someone filed an open meeting law complaint. It was said that we, we had to give public comment, but by that time Linda Kavasas was president and already fixed it. So as long as you rectify the situation, you're fine. So that was the only thing that actually we did. But at the same time, we're like learning how to navigate these different ways of doing meetings and we're coming back in and it's like six feet apart. And so I think for what we were dealing with, we did an okay job.
Is there mask mandates still mandatory in the um, school district? So isn't that mandatory at all?
No, a lot of um, students wear them. I think my son's school is like 80% of kids wear them.
So you, you don't, you don't need masks in the schools?
No.
I, I brought this up years ago to former school board trustee Edwards and, and Young and there's a few others. I, I, their names escape me. To separate transportation, to make it private, the school buses and to make the cafeteria contract out private instead of the school, um, Clark County School Board. It won't be on their plate. All they, all they be able to think about is educating their kids instead of transporting their kids or feeding their kids. We'll just privatize all that out. Do you think that's a good idea?
I think we need to come up with various solutions for the transportation issue. Um, the food issue, I think like it's definitely not perfect, but right now like that's not our biggest concern. And when I, when I was on PTO, I started the snack shack. I literally cleaned out this room that was like outside facing the playground, you know, cleaned all the paper out of it and stuff and started a snack shack. And then I was like, hey, maybe we can work with some kitchens, you know, some like these mama pop kitchens. We can plant a garden, we can do, you know, go, go to Whole Foods or whatever. And then it was like, oh no, all you can use is this company. And you can get these sour patches and these Cheetos because they're under this amount of calories and they're in the nutritional. But you can't, you know, go get an apple from someone's orchard because it's just way too much sugar for the kid or like come on. So that is definitely something we need to be able to figure out. I think we could have culinary programs. There's obviously like legal things and like risks that would need to be looked at, but regarding transportation, I have, I have given. So what I said is that we should come up with some sort of way. Maybe it's the district creating this app or maybe it's um, supporting our principals to do this in a way that like makes sense for all the schools. But we should be doing like an Uber for parents. You know, like uh, someone's in the neighborhood and I'm gonna go pick up five kids on the way, make my rounds, maybe even throw them some cash. You know, obviously background check, gotta make sure.
Vehicle maintenance.
Well, yeah, same thing, just like you at a job, you know, you can get money for your mileage and wear and tear on your vehicle or whatever, but obviously that would be like something that you'd have to figure out, maybe launch in a year. But it's definitely a, some sort of a solution for this transportation issue that we're having. And it would probably make kids more accountable to get to school. Like if it's not like, oh, I don't feel like I'm gonna get on the bus today versus like, oh, this Danielle's mom's gonna show up and she is mean. Like I'm not gonna say no to her. She's gonna be like, get out of bed, you know?
It's almost like a new, and it, it's more like an advanced version of uh, carpooling.
Yeah.
Basically, yeah.
But it's, it's kind of hard to like, for the school district to take that on, cause just like you said, that's, should this district even be doing that? But we really do have a legal responsibility to get kids to school and home from school. So we, I don't even know. Oh yeah, that kid is under our care until they hit, there's like something to the doorstep. So it would have to be something that's at least a partnership with the district. But I don't disagree that it should be at least in partnership with other people. Maybe that's, maybe it's like, hey, this neighborhood, this apartment complex has 30 kids. Let's just get this private company to handle that apartment complex. You know, then they'll know those kids or whatever, but yes, I'm open to those solutions.
So, so Clark County School District is the fifth largest, correct? What, what are they ranking in, 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 in the nation? Cause I, I, I hear 50th, I hear 51 if Puerto Rico was a state. I hear 48. Uh, wha- what, what, what is the, what is the ranking today of the Clark County School District?
So that's a very complex issue. Um, something that I've, okay. So if you look on the national list and all the publications, currently I think we're 49.
Forty nine.
Based on.
Out of 50.
Based on the standards that the federal administration, the Bush administration has pushed down to schools. And so the things that we are comparing against other districts, uh, the larger bin districts, rural districts. The things that matter that go into these rankings are things like um, scores when students are entering kindergarten. And other districts have universal preschool. And we don't, you know, we barely have, and we don't have them in preschools. Um, things like chronic absenteeism, uh, things like tardiness. Uh, when we are so transient and mobile, mobility, like transient is when they're moving in and out. Um, if a student is mobile, they're moving house to house to house, different schools. So when a student, you know, is tardy or chronically absent, that affects the rating too. Also graduation rates. And because we are transient and mobile, we have a lot of students who leave and either go to Mexico. Um, like, go to different states and then it becomes the principal's job who already has a ton of stuff to do. Talk about sticking to educating kids. It becomes their job to like find that kid and determine whether or not they graduated. And if they can't find them because they, especially when people go back to Mexico, it's like.
Thousand um, um, Clark County students that was, they, the school district couldn't find.
Fifty thousand, I think, and that was just, we, we were there.
So how, how are they gonna, did they figure that out yet or, or is it?
Well, they came back. That was with COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, oh my gosh, the community stepped up majorly and came up with connecting kids. And it was like a public education foundation. Um, the Elaine Wins, Communities and Schools, state, the state did this, brought everyone together and they pounded ground and connected all our kids during COVID. That was amazing.
Cause a lot of kids were doing the couch surfing that didn't really have a place.
Oh, and they still are. And there's kid, there's people living in multifamily households. And I mean, so to compare, if, if you were to take away all those things that like, we have an unfair disadvantage of compared to other districts and you only looked at actual grades, we're like number 32.
In, in the nation?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that, that's what I heard too. As far as just pure quality, it's 32. That same data.
Great either.
It's not great either, but it's not 49th or 51st.
That everyone's pushing so that they can push their curriculum in more and like there are things that are gonna be the magic pill or whatever.
So talk to me about Common Core. Who the heck did that and how did the school district approve that?
That was George Bush. That was he, there was a.
So you're saying it's a federal thing?
There was a time, um, when No Child Left Behind came out, which was a Bush imperative. It was, I mean, I don't know the exact numbers on this, but it was something like, there was a contest, okay? This is, this is real. Okay. There was a contest um, through the federal administration that was like, we're gonna give uh, five districts a bunch of money, like hundreds of millions of dollars or something.
And could you explain Common Core so people?
Hold on. So then they were like, everybody who wants to enter can enter for this big amount of money that everybody desperately needs because we're in a recession, you know? And all you have to do is promise to follow Common Core and change and start to use these high stakes testing methods. Which means that you tie students' test scores to teacher evaluations. That's why they're high stakes, like it's high stakes for the teacher. It's like a risk. It's like you're, you're really gambling on do I go to a title one school or do I go to this school up here in Southwest, you know? So you, it, that's why it's high stakes. So Common Core, I actually, so I, I feel like Common Core in what it is is actually good. It's just that it, um, there was no training. Parents didn't know how to do some, how to do it, what it was. It changed the way that like made parents not able to help kids with their homework. But the concept of Common Core is actually what you need to do to be able to do math day when you're grocery shopping. You know, if you're like, what's for 40% of this, you don't, you don't have a piece of paper and you're doing this, you have to be like 10 of that is, but times four of them, you know?
Yeah, Common Core is kind of interesting because it's almost like instead of just memorizing like two plus two is four. It's like how psychologically you go through to get to the, to the end result. You know, that was.
I actually already do Common Core. I realized like, I realized later in life that I have ADHD. And then in learning that, I, I And then in learning that, I, I looked back and I'm like, oh, I had to come up with all these other ways to do things. In a way that my brain will work for it. And so I've always done math like that and I can do like, I can get to like a quick percentage of something just by grouping it. Because we don't hold a lot of, um, information that, that someone else wants us to hold in our brain that's accessible. So we, we have to, we'll hold all the information that we're interested in and, you know, be able to do how, back to whatever. Yeah, but, um, it's, yeah, like the formula that they just told me is it going to stick or whatever. So I have to be able to like visualize it and stuff. So Common Core isn't real, it's actually a good method. It's just the fact that, um, it didn't work. And instead of going, okay, this didn't work and we may have been messing up all of public education nationally. They were like, hold on a minute. Oops. We just created a bunch of companies. That are now in schools and like literally every single state. And if we were to be like, sorry guys, doesn't work. People are going to be mad at us and also we're not going to have our money anymore. So now it's like this big like lie that, that this is how we should be doing it. High stakes accountability. Uh, rigorous instruction. We've cut out music. We've cut out recess. We've cut out AIDS. We've cut out, you know, teacher's AIDS. We've cut out programs. We've cut out even Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts being in the schools and, and we're wondering why the district is the way it is. I mean, if you ask anyone what was great about school, you know, I'll tell you, for me, it was my theater teacher. That was the only reason I made it as far in school as I did, because I would just go to theater and be able to hang out there if I, you know, didn't want to deal with my class or whatever. And she was amazing. Uh, I still talk to her and people don't, people remember the teacher. They remember the connections they had. They feel safe knowing that there's an adult there that they could talk to. And now with this high stakes testing and push for, you know, programs to be the teacher instead of a human being. It's just totally caused our kids to be disconnected. And as we know, connection is the number one thing that humans need to succeed. It's the only reason why we survived in the caveman era. When we're not the top of the food chain, we're able to connect with other people and form groups.
They said humans don't survive when they're isolated.
They don't. We don't. We know that. So why are we still trying to push kids to be on their own individual with a Chromebook? Staring at the screen, getting punished for their eyes looking anywhere else with tracking on it and whatnot. When we could be investing in technology that helps kids learn augmented reality or virtual reality or, you know, some STEM or whatever, but yeah, that's.
As a member of the school board, uh, do you support the ESAs?
The educational savings accounts? I do not.
And why is that?
Absolutely not. So why don't you give me a better question for that? Are you, are you talking like vouchers or just school choice in general?
Somebody could take their child out of the school district and put them in, um, private school, but the dollars that they would have, that the school would have received. Goes to them to take them, put them in private school or put them in, um, homeschooling or whatever.
Or a religious school.
Or a religious school.
So I would say that there's like gray areas to it. First of all, absolutely never should we give money to a religious school. It's unconstitutional. Um, and the only reason why it's being allowed is because there was like a loophole done. That said, oh, we know that we can't give public money to, uh, religious organizations. So instead, let's give it to the parents. We're not giving it to the school. We're giving it to the parents. Yet when the parents choose that they want that money to go to a school, they cash a check. That's literally signed over directly to that school, does not touch the parent's hands, does not touch the parent's bank account. And is going paid for by public funds, taxpayer dollars to religious schools. There's supposed to be a separation of state and church. That's crazy. Okay. So first of all, even if I was going to support them in general, it should not be too religious. I went to private Christian school. My siblings did. They graduated from it. I, it was great. I think that parents have a right to. I think there could be ways to support parents. With through grants or whatnot, or maybe not grants, but there, there's ways that we could help people go to the school they want to. It should not be this way. It should not take money out of public school and into private school now. Should it go to private school that isn't religious or for-profit charters or education management companies? What about companies? What about my, I want my child to go to this virtual school. And they operate out of a mall. And, uh, there, nobody there is actually an educator. They're all business entrepreneurs, you know, um, investors. And now they, they don't have to pay for a building or teachers or desks. Or food or security guards or any of the supplies or anything that schools pay for. Transportation, all the things. Um, and now I want to take that entire per pupil that comes to my student and give it to this group. Seriously? No, that's just privatizing education. The, the concept of the money following the student is just a facade. Created as a way to destroy public education and be able to bring all these private schools. It's a way to segregate. The haves from the have nots. And that's not what education is.
Do you really think that?
I at 100% fundamentally at the core of my existence, know that to be true. Yes. Do people have a right to go to have school choice? Of course. But if we all figured out what we want and what we want school choice to be, then we could do that through public education. We could have specialty schools. We do. We have global high schools for English language learners. We have STEM academies. We have magnet schools. We should have virtual learning as an option. We could have hybrid learning as an option. We, we should be able to provide the user experience that parents want while keeping money in public school. When you take the per pupil, which is at like 7,000 or so. And a student, you know, go homeschools or whatever. And now let's say three, the family takes their three kids out and puts them in a private school. And that $21,000 follows them to their private school. That's $21,000. It does not go to that school anymore. And they were all riding the bus and they were all in three different classrooms. And now that's $21,000 that we don't have for the bus driver and for gas and for the teacher. And that's how you take a handful of kids out of a school and you lose a teacher for an entire class.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that make the, make the school district want to improve though? If they have some type of monopoly like that, when they want to like really go from 50th to 20th to one.
Well, we already determined we're not actually at 50th.
Thirty-five to one.
Also, there's no data that shows that charter schools succeed. They don't have to, they, first of all, they do not have to follow all the laws that we do. They don't have to accept every single student regardless of needs or behavior. They can cherry pick. They can only choose families who are able to buy uniforms or donate $200 at the beginning of the year or whatever it is. They don't have the same stipulations of building their buildings like us. They don't have to evaluate their teachers. They don't have to be accountable in the same way that we are. So they can, they can have smaller class sizes and often charter schools do better because of class sizes. Because yes, we know that smaller class sizes work. Give us the money back so we can have the smaller class sizes and give you the result that you're saying that you want. Um, and the per pupil, by the way, was never meant to be like your, every student needs $7,000 to be educated. No, that's just a way of determining how much money would go to every school. You couldn't just be like, hey, every school is going to get $1 million. One school might have double that amount of students. They need more money. So it's just a way of determining how much money a school might need to operate. It's not like we know every kid needs $7,000 for their education per year. So that is crazy. Could you imagine if that was like police officers? Like, oh, this area, you know, just give me the money for the police officers. And I'm just, we're going to hire our own security and screw you guys that are right on the outside of the building and they're getting robbed over here. But we, our kids, our community, you know, use this money. Imagine if streets were like that, like, oh, this street is perfect. And this area over here has like cracks and everybody's getting in car accidents from it. But we, I, I'm still here, so still give me my $5,000 for my road.
I take it that you, you don't believe that if a child is zoned for this school, they don't have to go to this school. They could go to this school over here, right?
They should be able to if, like we should be able to make it happen.
Or, or, or.
No, we had it like that. It actually just changed recently, um, through policy that the board pushed through. Where it makes sense in a lot of ways because there was some inequity happening. And there could be some principles, maybe not allowing for zone variances or whatnot. So it was recently decentralized. And so all zone variances have to go through central. But now if you watch the meetings, we're hearing all sorts of people and getting emails of like, hey, uh, my kid has gone to this school forever and I work right next to it and their brother goes here. And now the district's telling me that my, you know, younger kid can't go here because they're not grandfathered in or whatever. So I, I really don't like what's happening with that. And I do believe that if families can transport. Or even if we could help them in some way, they should be able to go to a different school as long as there was capacity and it made sense with the principal and whatnot.
Ms. Ford, I, I could talk to you all day long about school district. Okay?
And I'm holding some of my questions because I will be one of the panel members interviewing it.
Gotcha.
But, but, um, I, I, I have to ask you this one. Should the school district teach our kids about sex ed? Or should the school district teach our kids about money management?
Is that an either or question?
Either or.
Yes.
Which one?
So if there was a choice?
If there was a choice. Why isn't there a choice?
I think that they should teach both of those things.
Sex ed and money management. Alright, so here's another question then. Do they teach, they teach sex ed in school, don't they?
Some kids get it.
Do they teach money management?
Not to my, some, that's kind of where some kids get it too, but it's not because of, um.
Shouldn't it be mandatory?
I think that it should be. I think kids should leave. And I don't care if you're going to college or if you are going into the workforce, you should know how to balance a checkbook. You should know what, how to get a credit card. Because nobody cares about it because all they care about is curriculum.
Could you push that issue though?
I could and I have, but I need four votes to do it.
And you can't even put it on the agenda because you're not the president or, so.
And I won't get voted president until another trustee gets on the board who will support it.
Don't you guys, before you attend the school board meetings, don't you guys vote on what's going to be on the agenda? Should, that's how it's supposed to be?
No.
That's not how it is now.
Say the meeting is a Thursday on the 15th. The week before, so like around like the seventh or something, on that Monday, I will get a draft agenda that only has the title of every agenda. And no context or every item, no context and no reference material. And it'll be like, this is the draft agenda. Then on that Tuesday, the president and the superintendent meet.
The superintendent again.
And the president would go, oh, what, what is this? What is that? There's still no draft material. So even if I, like, that's what it is.
Maybe that's why we're 50th or 35 or whatever.
Dude, I know. Then, then we get, um, that Thursday, so the next Thursday, the Thursday before the board meeting. We have briefings with staff and then the president and the superintendent determine which items of the agenda we get briefed on. And they'll go, alright trustees, they'll have different department leaders come and talk to us and go, uh, here's our MOA for this group. If you have any questions. And then if we have any questions, we have to like submit it by writing. It takes forever to get back. It's usually running into the meeting actually happening if we even get an answer.
That sounds more like a dictatorship than a democracy.
Welcome to my life for the last three and a half years.
But then, but don't you have some type of power of being a school board trustee? What, can't you make noise? Can't you call a, a news conference? Can't you do something?
Would you like me to send you 11 or so videos I've already put on Facebook of me literally being like.
Send these videos.
Why don't we have any power? I'm going, what do you mean? I can't question the consent agenda. My picture is on that wall. My name is on this, my name is on this document.
And I don't, I don't see how, how, how an employee could tell the employer what to do because you are the employer of the superintendent.
Know.
How's a superintendent dictate?
You're preaching to the choir.
It just doesn't make sense.
I know. I know this.
So then we got to change it.
So what people need to do is ask that, go ask this question to the four trustees who give the superintendent all the power. And who are fine with not having information and not being able to put items on the agenda.
I think if they give the superintendent the power, that means they're freaking lazy and they don't want to carry the water. They're lazy. They're rather the superintendent think for them and all they do is a puppet and just agree with it, right?
They don't want to have to answer to the community when things are bad and they are bad and they're always going to be bad in a lot of ways. So they don't, we want to push the blame over to the superintendent. Yes.
Well, Ms. Ford, it was absolute pleasure having you on. I really enjoyed her talk, although I have like a million more. But I, I'll just, I'll just not save it for another.
Hold on. All of this is my own personal opinion and not that of the entire school board of trustees. My lawyer told me to say that.
Disclaimer. Okay.
We have our own disclaimer.
Could you look into the camera?
Yes.
And, and tell folks why they should put you back in office and your point of contact.
Hello, Danielle Ford here, running for reelection. And I actually do not want to be reelected. Unless people are going to help, uh, elect other trustees who are pro-public education and who will stand up, uh, for the community. And who will actually do their jobs and try to make the district, uh, better for all students. So if, if you do not want to get on board and help support your elected officials and demand that they represent you as their constituent. Um, then vote for someone else. But if you'd like to learn more, then you can visit my website, Danielle Ford Speaks Out. To learn more about the issues that I'll be talking about throughout the remainder of the campaign.
Danielle Ford, thank you so much for coming on the program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, folks, that's Danielle Ford, who's currently the Clark County School Board trustee representing District F. But before we go, we're going to come back on the air in a few minutes. And we're going to let you know who we actually endorsed for governor. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jones with Veterans in Politics. We'll be right back momentarily.